Good. All right, here we are. So, very nice colleagues to see you here again. And I'm going to officially call to order this committee, the whole meeting for Monday, August 21st, 2023. And our first order of business is to call the roll. Clerk Borlaine.
Commissioner Decker.
President.
Commissioner Hess.
President.
Commissioner Hoffman.
President.
Commissioner Juarez.
Here.
Commissioner Pradel.
President.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
President.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you so much, Clerk Borlaine. And COO Lamb. Oh, any communications?
None for this meeting, thank you.
Thank you so much. Now is the opportunity for public comments. Public comments at the committee, the whole meeting are limited to two minutes. So, we will start with anyone who's in the chambers who would like to make a comment for this meeting. If you are interested, please come forward, state your name and where you live in the city. Just a reminder is that we also have a public comment period for our business meeting that starts at seven. W City Manager Chamberlain, has anybody called in with a public comment? We'll go ahead and check. We do not. All right, thank you, DCM Chamberlain. Appreciate that. Okay, COO Laurel Liam, we're down to our work session.
Yes, I get to introduce a couple of speakers we have today, and we're going to be talking about neighborhood enterprise zone policy. For our presentation tonight, we have Christina Anderson, City Planner and Deputy Director for Community Planning Economic Development; Jamie McCarthy, our Sustainable Development Coordinator; and Sherilyn Parsons, our Housing Development Supervisor. With that, I'll turn it over to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have Jamie, Sherilyn, and I are going to kind of tag-team this presentation a little bit, so you'll see us kind of rotating in and out. This is a continuation of a discussion that we started on July 17th at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, where we brought to you kind of the rough start of our Neighborhood Enterprise Zone policy that we are creating. Since then, we have had more time as staff and have had more discussions, both internally and with our development community, have made some changes, and are back before you tonight. You'll have noticed from looking at your packets that this item is also on the regular agenda. If we are in a comfortable position with what's being proposed, it is being brought forward for action this evening. There are two NEZ items, you'll have noticed. One is what I'm talking about right now, the policy, citywide policy. The second item is to actually create a neighborhood enterprise zone in downtown and asking for action from this body to create or establish that area tonight. So, two items tonight, one very specific and one policy. Right now, we're talking about the policy. So, here's what we're going to be speaking about during our committee, the whole presentation. Why do we need a policy? Why are we doing it now? An overview of the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone tool, very briefly, we did talk about it at our previous meeting. How this local policy that we're suggesting be created can advance our city housing goals. And then we're going to kind of get into some of the meat of the proposed policy itself. So, real quick, before we dive in, why are we doing a policy and why are we doing it right now? And there are several reasons. The first, and in no particular order, the state recently has made changes to the public act that guides neighborhood enterprise zones. And those changes are different than the, are different from the neighborhood enterprise zones that we've already created in the city, and have made some types of development projects happen a little easier, combine different types of projects, since we want to make sure that we're ready for when the next one comes in, following that new policy. Second, we've had the benefit of a lot of Kalamazoo-specific housing data from the county and then the Housing Village. The Upjohn Institute has done a deeper dive into the types of units that are needed both throughout the county, which we have then taken to look at what the city needs and where within the city. And so, we now have this information at our fingertips, and we have the opportunity to use it to help shape our, how we use these tools and how we create policy. We want to create a policy because we anticipate there to be new requests, more requests of this type of tool, and we want to make sure that we're creating a predictable path and predictable set of guidelines for when a developer or a neighborhood association comes to us to request a neighborhood enterprise zone. So, by setting out a policy and setting out a very clear path, both the process for creating it, how you monitor it, how you manage it, what does it mean to have one of these policies, laying it out so it's clear for everybody is always beneficial, time is money. So, it is helpful both on the developer's end to know exactly what the path may be, and certainly better for staff to know when we're doing these, what are the steps that we need to do to create them. So, very quickly, and this is real quick, so neighborhood enterprise zones, you know, it is a state-authorized tool that cities can use. And what, they're always kind of a two-step process, right? So, it is a tool that you, is meant to incentivize housing development in places where it's not happening or it's not happening very quickly, right? And it does that by providing a tax abatement. You create the area, so the NEZ boundaries, you create that district boundary, and then projects, qualifying projects, come back and say, "I'm in this NEZ boundary, here are the elements of my project, you know, I'd like your approval to request a tax benefit award certificate at the state level for that abatement." And so, that's how it operates. And I know many of you, some of this you know and are familiar with, because we're, at the same time as creating this policy, we're parallel also creating an NEZ district in downtown. So, I'm going to turn it over to Sherilyn Parsons to talk a bit about how this tool fits within our larger toolbox and our housing strategy.
Thank you, Christina. So, when we, when we work with policy or we're talking about the housing strategy, the first thing we ask ourselves is yes and. So, the question we usually follow, or the statement we say is yes and how do we get there? So, in thinking about this NEZ policy, we really look at state and local incentives very seriously to see how we can create cumulative impact with the things that we are doing. So, when we talk about the, when I push the wrong button? Oh, now I went too far. So, when we start talking about the incentives that we've been talking about in CPED, we grouped our toolbox as having three sections. So, we thought, we really want to create incentives that decrease the barriers to infill housing. We want to create opportunity for gap financing that really spurs housing development and makes housing more affordable. So, when we talk about gap financing, we are thinking about the development in three sections. So, when we start to talk about these tools and these incentives, we have construction costs, we have operating costs, and we have revenue in every development project. And so, right now, when we talk about this NEZ tool, we are looking at how can we offset operating cost that would help to create some affordability in all of the projects that would get to benefit from this tool? Then number three, the third section in our toolbox, is to stack or layer different incentives in such a way that we can drive affordability even lower and also create opportunities for supportive housing. Typically, these type of projects really need federal and state incentives to award the millions that go into offsetting the revenue loss through the affordable units. So, we'll talk about that in a little bit. But the goal then is to increase housing across all income levels and neighborhoods. And so, I do want to allow Jamie McCarthy to come up and talk specifically about the BRA benefits, and then I'll be back.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about this tool or this category within the toolbox, which is really trying to set the table or set us up for success in using the land or reusing the land that we have within the city, and really thinking about how we address some of the barriers to infill development. It is often, almost without exception, always more expensive than finding, you know, someplace outside of an urban area, greenfield-type development, because we have a lot of legacy costs. And particularly in the brownfield world, we try to offset some of those costs by reimbursing the developer who's come on to this project, is willing to bear some of these costs upfront, and then we can use some tax capture dollars to help cover a variety of costs. They are limited under the brownfield statute, but they help us with site preparation, paying for the added cost if there are contamination, contaminated soils or contamination involved, blight, and vacant buildings or structures that are maybe obsolete or deteriorating. Those were built or owned by a previous owner, and so someone new coming in can get some help to cover those kind of costs. And then something that'll be coming to you later this year, the state just very recently, last month, approved some legislative changes to the Brownfield Act whereby we're going to be able to look at and perhaps figure out how that tool could help us try to reach below some of that market rate to get just a little bit more affordability in those projects. And so, we're looking at those new changes and thinking about the brownfield incentives policy in that way. But the city's been doing some other things, too. We have been working on these pre-approved plans, so again, that's kind of offsetting some of that cost when someone has a lot, you know, an infill opportunity, wants to build a single dwelling, up to four units, so that they can, you know, get a little predictability, they can get this pre-approved plan, the permits that go with it. Again, just streamlining, making it more predictable, and then that, of course, is offsetting some of those costs. And then also, the tremendous amount of work we have been doing and are continuing to do in updating the zoning code, because zoning certainly plays into what's built where and what that ends up costing. Sherilyn, come back here.
Thank you. Yes, as I flip my pages here, so I do want to also echo, I commend all the work that's been done on the zoning. Really, it is the key that unlocks access to all of this, and so, great job for everyone who's been involved that came before me. Well, let me find my page here. I don't have it. I'll wing it. So, NEZ is the tax incentive, as we're talking, for new or rehabbed residential units to spur development in places where it's not currently happening. So, the word in the statute is in distressed communities, but it's really that the tool that brings people to the table, it's a competitive tool, so that if they could choose to do it there or here, it's a tool that would turn their eyes to say, "Let me see first if I can do it here." So, it is one of those swing tools that gets people looking at the city of Kalamazoo. We are talking about tools in the toolbox, though, because one of the things I mentioned is when we look at development, we are trying to, in policies particularly, we are trying to think, how do these pieces play together for cumulative impact? So, we're not looking at any of these to stand alone, but how could they stack or play together to bring what we want in the city as well as what is viable as a development project? Because even if the developer wants to build something with every single one of our tools, if they can't get financed, it's not going to happen. So, some of these really do have to offset what can, what they can get in financing for that primary loan or for the primary money that it's going to take to build. So, we have housing development funds, which at the seven o'clock, there's a recommendation for some ARPA dollars for an affordable housing project. Those development dollars are helping to offset the construction costs, because we have, everybody, not just Kalamazoo, everybody across the board, has experienced an increase in development costs. Rising land costs, increased interest rate, labor shortages, just higher construction cost overall, there's been material shortages as well as manufacturing delays, and as Christina mentioned, time is money when it comes to development. I talked with a developer earlier in this week, and they needed something right now, because right now was the difference between a quarter percent interest today versus tomorrow. That's real money. And so, we have the housing development funds to assist with that. Our HUD home and CDBG dollars are federal allocations that actually support all affordable, either neighborhoods or low-income housing projects or developments. And so, those are all concentrated toward the low-income neighborhoods and family. Then we also have had, and hope to have again, Foundation for Excellence dollars. Why these dollars are so important in the development world is because these are dollars that can go both for construction cost, operating expenses reduction, or the revenue replacement. So, they allow a little deeper dive with affordability, because they can offset the revenue loss through deeper affordability. We also use dollars for property acquisition, and we actually look to purchase underutilized properties and bundle them or clean them up if there's things, whether it's easements or land assistance that needs to happen, and market them for mixed-rate affordable, mixed-income affordable housing projects. So, the third piece where we're really doing that deep dive into affordable, our deeply affordable housing projects require federal and state participation. The primary way that these large affordable unit projects get done is through tax credits or bonds, and that is money that comes through the state to assist with giving millions of dollars to the project with the intent on seeing more affordable units. We talked about the pilot a few weeks back, or maybe months now, I can't remember, and we talked about a project having to have at least 80% of the units being 60% area median income or below. That's an example of what a pilot project or a tax credit project wants to see in it. So, the pilot is the payment in lieu of taxes. This is a 50, we write this as a 50-year incentive to maintain those, yeah, to maintain those affordable units for long term. The Foundation for Excellence, we have used traditionally to be that additional soft, patient capital or funding that goes into a project and just waits until the project can realize some revenue to possibly pay it back. Or if it's deeply affordable, it's that soft, patient capital that just sits in the background and helps to lower the overall cost of the project, so that it can continue to support very low-income households. So, tonight, we're just talking about the NEZ policy, but I wanted to show how all of these tools stack up with each other within the toolbox. So, our goal is to increase housing across all income levels and all neighborhoods. So, the two types, as Christina mentioned, the two types of NEZs that are in the policy is the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone for multifamily units. These are new residential units and/or multifamily rehabilitated units. The second component mentioned in the policy is the Neighborhood Enterprise Homestead Zone. This would be for new homeowners that are able to put a minimum investment into their new home, and they would be able to apply for the certificate and take advantage of the Neighborhood Enterprise Homestead certificate to offset a portion of the investment of their primary residential home. As Christina mentioned, the first thing the act requires is that boundaries are set up. We took our lead for where we pick the boundaries based on the county housing plan, which identifies urban center, urban core, and general urban. And so, you'll see a map a little bit later that shows that center, that, or that, yeah, the center, the core, and the general. We would have to notify the county, and the public hearing, by all of you, would still need to happen in this very chambers. And the boundaries that we are presenting in this policy would exist until the sunset term, that's also within the policy. Once the, once the project boundaries are defined, and this, if this were to go live, what would happen next is that any developer who would qualify for this type of incentive would have to apply for the certificate. They would apply for that certificate up to the years that they are eligible, and then they would be awarded those eligible years based on the terms of the policy. And why that is so important is because in creating a simple process that the development community knows, and staff knows, and anybody in chambers knows, it creates an ease for someone who's thinking about a concept development to come into the city, open up the toolbox, shuffle through, what is it that I can use, what can, what can actually make this project viable? And it allows, as I mentioned, for competitive process, a competitive process for developers to come in to look at this. It also allows a predictability when you're in concept phase. So, when developers are in the concept phase, they're trying to stack up sort of conceptually, how much does this project cost, and what can I use to offset those costs to make this viable, to make this, to make this actually be able to convert to something I can borrow money against and then have enough to pay that borrowed money back. It also creates a predictability for staff as well, so that staff can also easily align with what's being told the development is and what's being offered out as the incentive. So, not only does the process simplify for anybody looking to develop, but it also has an administrative assistance to those who are touching these projects within, within the building that they work in. Christina.
So, I'm going to turn now to our third objective, which is the, or creating the policy itself, or the policy itself and what's included in it. And, you know, I just want to very quickly say, we paused and went through all the other bits of information, because it's really important to view this as a tool within our housing strategy toolbox that works for some things and some types of projects, but isn't going to work, it's certainly not on its own, work for all projects. And, you know, we, as staff, you'll be, what we're going to be coming to quite a bit over the next year with other housing policies, residential zoning, and so this is kind of the tip of the iceberg to really get our toolbox, if we're going to stick with that analogy, in order. So, in creating the policy, these are some of the things, you know, as always, our work is grounded in the strategic vision, the master plan, our neighborhood plans, and that's what helps create our housing strategy for us to move forward. And we took our direction for the policy from this work, as well as from the data that I mentioned that we now have from the county, and we'll talk about that in a second. So, we set up four priorities. As I mentioned and Sherilyn mentioned, with an NEZ, you know, the first step is creating that district. There's nothing outside of setting those boundaries, that's all that happens in the first step. When you're looking at what a project might be able to have, what the level of tax benefit of a project may be able to be awarded, that comes at the second step, the certificate approval step, where the project is meeting certain terms that we lay out, which gets, which equates to a certain number of years of that tax benefit. And so, we looked at four things. And we have, we looked at policies from other cities like Grand Rapids, we looked at terms or elements of projects that other incentives use in their scoring or point system to, you know, get the, you know, to equate to an award that that incentive gives you. We, as staff, stuck very closely to housing and housing-related items for the terms of the project. This is a tool to incentivize housing in places where it's not happening or not happening very quickly, and a tool to fill, to fill gaps in financing, and so that's, you know, we took that information and focused on housing itself as what we would look at to judge a project for the number of tax benefit years. So, one, location, and Sherilyn alluded to this, and I'll flip to a map in just a second. You know, we have from Upjohn Institute in the county, a series of data with housing types, which is number two, that are needed in the community, and where, we know where in the community those types need to go. So, we know some will be in downtown, some will be the next ring out, and some will be the furthest ring from the downtown along the city's boundaries. Looking at location and housing type were our first two priorities. And when we talk about housing type, we are again following the Upjohn Institute and county lead in the data that they provided for, when they talk about the number of, or the types of housing that are needed within our community. We are looking at things like single-family homes, which we still need, although we need less of them than we do other types of units. We need attached housing, so that's row houses, that could be two, three, four units together. We need low-rise apartment buildings. We need higher-rise apartment buildings. And accessory the next year with other housing policies, residential zoning, and so this is kind of the tip of the iceberg to really get our toolbox if we're going to stick with that analogy in order. So in creating the policy, these are some of the things, you know, as always, our work is grounded in the strategic vision, the master plan, our neighborhood plans, and that's what helps create our housing strategy for us to move forward. And we took our direction for the policy from this work as well as from the data that I mentioned that we now have from the county, and we'll talk about that in a second. So we set up four priorities. As I mentioned and Sherilyn mentioned, with an NEZ, you know, the first step is creating that district. There's nothing outside of setting those boundaries, that's all that happens in the first step. When you're looking at what a project might be able to have, what, the level of tax benefit of a project may be able to be awarded, that comes at the second step, the certificate approval step, where the project is meeting certain terms that we lay out, which gets, which equates to a certain number of years of that tax benefit. And so we looked at four things. And we have, we looked at policies from other cities like Grand Rapids. We looked at terms or elements of projects that other incentives use in their scoring or point system to, you know, get the, you know, to equate to an award that that incentive gives you. We as staff stuck very closely to housing and housing-related items for the terms of the project. This is a tool to incentivize housing in places where it's not happening or not happening very quickly and a tool to fill, to fill gaps in financing. And so that's, you know, we took that information and focused on housing itself as what we would look at to judge a project for the number of tax benefit years. So one, location, and Sherilyn alluded to this, and I'll flip to a map in just a second. You know, we have from Upjohn Institute in the county, a series of data with housing types, which is number two, that are needed in the community. And where, we know where in the community those types need to go. So we know some will be in downtown, some will be the next ring out, and some will be the furthest ring from the downtown along the city's boundaries. Looking at location and housing type were our first two priorities. And when we talk about housing type, we are again following the Upjohn Institute and county lead in the data that they provided for, when they talk about the number of, or the types of housing that are needed within our community. We are looking at things like single-family homes, which we still need, although we need less of them than we do other types of units. We need attached housing, so that's row houses, that could be two, three, four units together. We need low-rise apartment buildings. We need higher-rise apartment buildings and accessory dwelling units. And those five types are what the county used and, you know, projected numbers for what we need to meet our community's needs today and over the next 10 years. And so when we talk about housing types, we're talking about those five. The third priority in our, our NEZ policy is cost or affordability and how we can think about the terms, the terms of the tax benefit based on the ability to provide units at a certain affordability rate. And then finally, we talked about parking, and you can say, parking, that's not housing. Well, it, it kind of is because parking, creating, building parking is an expense and that expense is expense in space. And if you have a high expense for parking, that money's not, those dollars are not going to other units. If you need to, if you're providing a lot of parking on your site and you're taking space, you're prioritizing space for cars and not for people. And so we tied it into that, and I'll talk in just a moment about what that looks like. So I'm not going to read this, you guys have seen this many times. This is the overall county housing need by location. Again, at the top are those types of housing that I referenced. Location, these are county locations all the way across. When we think about the city, we have those five types of housing. Number of units that we need and where we need them. Starting from the bottom, urban core, which is our downtown, urban center, which is the first ring around, where you can see we need a lot of units. These, this is, a lot of our neighborhoods need units here and of a variety of type, as you can see by this table, and then general urban on the outside. And so when you put, when you lay it out on a map, and last time we showed the map, we were a little bubbly, right? We just did some circles to kind of give you an idea of what we were talking about. We have mapped it in a more definitive way. And so again, our urban core is our downtown neighborhood boundary. Urban center is from that boundary out to that kind of dashed line or hatch line that goes into many of our neighborhoods, including those that touch downtown and a little bit further out. And then as you get less urban, you're in the general urban area, generally it's, a lot of our single-family development is there primarily and not a lot of our housing So when you apply these priorities, you think about those housing types, you think about that map location, and you start to say, okay, if we're creating a neighborhood enterprise zone and projects are going to come and request a tax benefit, they're going to request a certificate from you, what are the range of, what's the range of that benefit and what is it based on? And so the housing policy says, and this is something that we took from Grand Rapids, you know, there's a base incentive, right? We'll give you nine years of tax abatement if you do a qualifying project within an NEZ that's been designated, as long as you're meeting the requirements, you know, you can get those nine years. When we look beyond that is when we start to add those criteria and those priorities that I mentioned. So in the urban core, and I'm going to go over, I'll go over these and then we can talk about them as well. In the urban core, which again is our downtown, a project could, could achieve, you know, 12 or 15 years of a tax abatement depending on what the project brings to the table. So a project would, could get 12 years if 10% of the units in their development average out to 80% of AMI. Or you could get 12 years if you provide two or more of those housing types I mentioned. And you might say, urban core, that's downtown, don't we just want apartment buildings in downtown? If you look at our zoning, actually along the edge of downtown, as we start to move into our neighborhoods, we do kind of go down in intensity. The zoning code allows, it doesn't allow unlimited height, it starts to go down, and it allows a wider variety of housing types. So there are locations in downtown that are appropriate for more than just an apartment building. So just wanted to make sure that I pointed that out. 15 years can be achieved if a project meets one of those two criterias that I just mentioned that got you 12 years. And the project builds 50% of the parking or less, the maximum amount of, if a project builds no more than 50% of the maximum parking allotted by the code, by the zoning code. So the zoning code says you can, you can provide up to X amount of parking. So we are saying you can get to 15 years if you do one of those two things, either housing type or affordability, and you reduce the amount of parking that you're building onsite. You can use existing parking in other locations to meet your need if you have it, but not building it onsite gets you an additional three years. 15 years can also be achieved if you increase that percentage of units that average out at 80% to 20% or by combining. In our urban center, where you recall from that chart, you know, 1,200 units are going to need to go in this location of a variety of types. And so again, we have set it up so either 12 or 15 years could be achieved, again, based on thinking about multiple housing types within a project, thinking about having at least 20% of a project's units that average out at 80%. And then 15 years, you do one of those, you do both of those, or again, we have a, we worked out, if you do less parking, you have the opportunity to add years to your tax abatement. And general urban being our final category on the outside. Now, general urban, we are specifically in this talking about projects that are located on key corridors, right? And those corridors align with our street design manual. Again, our street design manual we use in our zoning code, we use in site plan review, we use in our streets planning work and when we do design of streets. And so very specifically, there are a few streets that the project must be located on, neighborhood network, the enhanced neighborhood street, or the city connector, near transit, right? Because we're trying to think about these projects in a way that people can have services nearby, ideally they have access by bus if they're able to walk or ride to get to places nearby. So that is why in the general urban area, we very specifically tied to the street types. Again, very similar, you can get 12 years based on the housing types you provide and the percentage of units at 80% of AMI. And then if you do both of those things, you can achieve 15 years in the urban core. So we've tried to create paths that our project is able to achieve 12 or 15 years, 15 years being the maximum the state allows for this type of benefit. The second type of NEZ that our policy lays out rules for is the homestead NEZ. Now, we have a homestead NEZ, and we've talked about it before. The Vine Neighborhood is designated as a, as a NEZ homestead. And what that, what that means right now is that for owner-occupied properties, the owner can put a minimum of investment into their property of, minimum of $500 over the course of three years. And in, as a result of that investment, they get a small reduction in their taxes. Those numbers, that's what exists in the Act, and that's what we're putting forward in the policy, what we're adding to the policy specifically regarding homestead NEZs, is the need to have a supporting organization when we create these districts. And so it could be a neighborhood association, it could be a community-based organization, housing organization that is there to help support the creation of the district, to help to market it, right? Help residents understand what it is, help them do their applications for their own personal property, and help us overall monitor and have the, the district meet the goals that it lays out for us. So we're at, we're asking for some organization to participate with the residents if we're going to create new homestead NEZs in the city. And so that's a change from how the Vine One operated. But the owner-occupied requirement as well as the minimum investment is staying the We've spent a lot of time and a lot of our conversations have focused on those pieces of the policy, right? Because those are the ones that kind of relate to, I'm a developer, I may bring a project, you know, what does that mean for me as I'm working on my pro forma and so forth? But the policy includes a lot of other information that are critical to administering this type of tool. This is a fairly staff-intensive tool to use, right? There, when we're creating the policy, you know, the assessor's office is running all sorts of data and numbers, there's notice requirements, there's public hearings, and you know, meetings to approve, and that's just the creation of it. With each certificate that comes through for each individual project, the city has to process that, involves staff in the assessor's office as well as in community planning and economic development. It's, you know, getting those certificates approved by this body, but it's also monitoring them each year to make sure that projects are still in good standing, that that $500 investment over the course of three years was done, and to make sure that everything is moving smoothly in that world. So there, we want to make sure that when we're creating an NEZ, that we're doing it thoughtfully and in a way that is benefiting, the benefit to the community and to the development community and to residents is matched with staff time and that we are able to manage that work. So the NEZ policy establishes a clear process and guidance for the creation of the NEZ, including things for this body to be thinking about when an NEZ is presented to you, right? How do you think about the, you know, it's the benefit or the intent of the district? We definitely want, need to make sure that we are meeting the state statute requirements, including the maximum amount of NEZ that's allowed in a city. The city puts a cap on the amount of land area that can be in an NEZ at any one time, which is why it's important to think about when you're creating those districts, that you're creating them thoughtfully, you know, getting the biggest bang for your buck while not adding lots of excess properties on there that maybe would not participate or shouldn't participate because ultimately you have a cap. And that, you need to be mindful of that, especially when we're thinking about homestead NEZs and we're thinking about neighborhood scale kinds of projects. The policy includes budget and detail, the annual monitoring of the NEZs and individual awards. Again, this is something that both community planning, economic development, and the assessor's office has worked that, that shared between these two bodies or two departments. And the policy also outlines when a tax award would need to be revoked because it, there's a project that's no longer in good standing, something has, has, has gone awry, and what is that process? So the policy outlines all of those things. Other things that includes is a recommendation for when we create NEZs, we know that we have a max cap of land, so, you know, when would staff likely recommend that NEZ to be sunset, right? So it's not existing out there in perpetuity, adding to the cap when we could be using it elsewhere, and what would that look like? And so the policy outlines all of these things. Again, having a predictable policy with process is really important. It's important for staff so we're not missing steps in the creation of an NEZ or someone, or, you know, reviewing a certificate. It's important for the community, it's important for the developers, so everybody's kind of on the same page when these things are coming forward. And I'm going to let Sherilyn wrap up, but before, before I do, I just wanted to preview, one of the reasons why we went through, you know, all those other tools, one was to kind of help you frame how any, you know, the best use of an NEZ and how they work within the larger toolbox. But also, you know, we have a lot, as I mentioned, we have many more housing cover tool conversations coming to you, both policy with zoning that will be kicking off later this year, early next year, other policy updates, including the BRA, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, as Jamie kind of alluded to, the state has made some changes that impact how it can be used for affordable housing. We also have invited Ryan Kilpatrick from Housing Next to come speak to the commission in December, who, Ryan is, works out of Grand Rapids, is a, I'm going to say, an expert in all, in all things housing, has a really great track record and understands all the tools and how we can best use each tool, right? And, and what it gets, you know, what type of housing it gets the community. Because again, it's, we said our housing strategy is a yes and, right? And how important it is that we are thinking about all the types at all price points in all neighborhoods. And Ryan has had some great experience, has some great data for us about kind of the perils for when supply and demand, what, what happens when supply and demand don't work at the different price points and how very regularly that naturally occurring affordable housing can get taken up by those at the medium and higher level income brackets. If there's not anything in their price point, they just move down and, and, you know, they can easily outbid and take what's available at that next lower range and, you know, that clearly presents a problem for us in terms of what we're offering the community. So Ryan's going to come talk about that and again, help us really think through all the tools to make sure that we're using them each to the best of their ability. And I think it'll be a great kind of prelude to our zoning discussion for residential districts. And so I'll let Sherilyn wrap us up, and then we'll be happy to answer your questions.
Take a minute to appreciate the image on the screen or on your PowerPoint. So we, we liked this image when we're thinking about the policies and working with all of the players, all the funding sources, all the incentives, the abatements, the reductions. We are trying to create policies and incentives that invite people into the city of Kalamazoo or invite the emerging developers or the existing developers to build supply. One of the main reasons that there is a crisis when it comes to affordable housing is just because supply really dried up. We had a market crash and construction never reached the points of new construction prior to that market crash. So we've never caught up from 2008, 2010. Now we're coming out of this pandemic and supply is less than ever. Supply in all, in all markets. So market rate and work, market rate housing or units are really important right now because if market, if market rate units are not made available, then what happens is those higher incomes want a place to live, and so they go where they can afford, and they price out our workforce and low-income units. Workforce and low-income units are needed because we need to create opportunities for workforce and low-income units. However, we have to move the market together because we can have an unintended consequence if we just focus on one end of the spectrum versus the other. So we have to think about this as a full market or as a river where the whole thing moves together. We don't want the river flooding on one side, we don't want the river flooding, maybe that's not a good example when I think about flooding. But anyways, we don't want, we don't want the market, you know, flooding or, or oversaturating on either side. And so this, this tool presented to you is, is one of the Jenga blocks. And when we're thinking about this, we want to make sure that when we're rolling out incentives, that we are thinking about what makes a project competitive and what can help make a project viable. Because a project can move forward if it's viable and it will just crash and not come to existence if it's not. So I think it's an important image to leave you with. Any questions?
So first of all, thank you very much for being here. I appreciate that. Questions, commissioners? Yep, Vice Mayor Cooney.
Thank you. This is a lot of work, really interesting, and it is wonderful to have another tool. Couple of questions. One, you talk about 80% of AMI. What is AMI in the city?
Yeah, so the average median income is posted annually. It comes from the state and then it's triggered down, I mean, it comes from the, from HUD and it's triggered down to the states. So the average income for Kalamazoo is 92.2. And so if we think, 92.4, 92.2, I think, so if we think 80% of that, that, it's of that average median income for Kalamazoo County. And then 60% of that, it's that 90, that 94, that 94.2.
But that's for a family of four.
That's for family of four, thank you.
That's not for a single person.
Okay.
There is different for every family size, so that's for a family of four.
So if we're doing an apartment for one person...
Then the AMI is somewhere in the upper 40s?
Yeah, it's, it's 47 and some change. Yeah, so it's a grid that goes from one person to three, all the way up to eight. And then it goes, you know, 20%, 30%, 50%, 60%, 80%, 100%, 120%, which is workforce.
So what I was trying to get in my head was, is this, how much is this going to benefit low-income people? And if it was 94,000 and 80% of that, that's not an awful lot. And if it was 94,000 and 80% of that, that's not an awful lot aimed at low income people. But if it's changed, like it's for, for a one-person apartment or a two-person apartment, that makes a big difference. So, thanks for that. Second question is, one of the things, I read a lot on social mobility and helping people move up to the next level, especially kids. And one of the things is getting people into areas, low-income people into areas that are more affluent and have greater resources and are safe and things like that. Do you see this as a tool to help do that?
I do. So we really, we really mirrored the county plan so that it expanded outside of just the traditional HUD-focused core neighborhoods, which is one of HUD's encouragements to what's called affirmatively furthering fair housing. So we, in all of our incentives, we are thinking of, also through the lens of affirmatively furthering fair housing, offering opportunities across the board.
Thank you.
You all set, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm good, I just break that down affirmatively.
Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you guys for that presentation. I just had a couple of quick questions. So, everyone always says there's not enough parking. But when you think about what we are trying to do in the city, which is make it more of a connected city and to make it to where not everybody needs a car, not to where, to where if you don't want a car, you don't have to have a car. So I do kind of like, you know, giving the discount for doing less parking because as we start doing more work within our streets, it's gonna be more of a walkable, ridable area. When you talk about the, the new, and the new zones, so does that also go towards an individual that says that wants to purchase a lot and then build there? Would they be able to take advantage of this?
For homestead?
Yes.
Yeah, so homestead specifically will go for a new, a new property owner. So it goes for someone that doesn't currently have a homestead status on their property. So it specifically is for that new homeowner moving in.
Okay, so then that would also spur development on vacant lots that we may have that someone wants to build on, say, hey, I can come and build now. And now, you know, with the $500 investment, of course, we know building a home's gonna be a little bit more than that, they're actually gonna be able to take advantage of the tax benefits. So I like that, and I think individuals would like that, you know, if they want to build a home, hey, I can come and build in wherever I want to as long as it's within the zone and still also be able to take part in these credits. Is this, is this transferable if they sell their home?
So, the investment would have to be made by a new owner. So, it would go with the property and the new owner. So once it transfers, that new owner doesn't have that homestead exemption to them through title, which is kind of, but yes.
Okay, but they could apply for it?
Yeah.
Perfect. I just wanna make sure that, you know, it does transition over the years and over the time as long as that zone is still in effect.
Yep, they would have to apply for the certificate as a new certificate.
I do like what you said, you said, you know, policies are, are cumulative impact. And when you think about that, I was doing some, just readings of some things, when you put policy, policies into place, when you're able to make a good public policy, it's gonna create a lasting framework that goes on forever. In order to really fix, in order to really make it effective, we have to work alongside all of the other tools that we have, you know, that the city is coming up with, the ones that we have now and the new ones that we could be putting into place because we're giving developers that are saying, hey, I can only do this, but hey, I've got all these other stacks over here that I can jump into and do some really affordable housing. And I think, you know, again, with the passing of the HB 362 that the governor did, you know, I think it's HB 362 or 364 and, I believe it is 362, you know, there's tons of funds out there to help big developers, small developers, you know, build more housing in that area. And when you talk about the workforce housing, you have to think that when an organization, a business is thinking about coming to the city of Kalamazoo and setting up routes here, that's what they're looking at. They're looking at the, the infrastructure that we are working on, they're looking at, you know, the broadband, they're looking at the transportation, they're looking at if I come and move my facility here and I'm gonna need to hire 500 people, where are they gonna stay? And those are all things that all, I think all these businesses, you know, are looking at. So I just kind of wanted to point that out, is like, we need housing, as you said, from all price points, from someone that makes $30,000 a year to someone that makes, as you said, the AMI up to $90,000. And following up with that, as you said, you know, we're gonna be having a lot of, Christina, you said a lot of housing policies coming towards us. And I think that as we're doing this and as we're thinking about trying to make more housing in areas, this is going to be a perfect time for us to kind of review all of our policies that coincide with housing. From inspections to building, I think this is, what we're doing now, I think, is a good segue for us to really review those, review those policies and as you have in your presentation, to see what barriers are there and what barriers we can remove or how we can make it more accessible for big developers and some of our smaller developers that are just coming online to do some of these projects.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you. I just have one more question in reference to a no-ful that came out. Are you all on top of that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And do, so it's a new no-ful that came out through HUD pathways to removing obstacles for housing, it was money that was appropriated. I wanna make sure that we're trying to get a piece of that for all that we're doing here 'cause I think that could be an interesting piece when we look at how you're stacking things, the funding and all that kind of stuff. So, I just, that's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Commissioner Hess?
Yeah, thanks for that presentation. You spoke about an NEZ cap. What, what is that? What, how, how many zones can we have at the same time?
Yeah, so it goes off of acreage. Acreage of land, how, so I can't, I can't completely answer that. So for the homestead NEZ, it's a total of 10,000 acres. For the multifamily, 10%? So how does, how do you word it? 10%?
10% of our land area.
10% of our land area.
Okay.
Together, we could answer it.
And so, do we have, do you believe that we currently have the staff bandwidth to have 10% of our, our land area within NEZ?
I think it depends on the type of NEZ that we're looking at and the number of certificates each project would bring. Right? So, when you talk about a homestead NEZ, there are multiple individual, each property owner does their own certificate, right? And that certificate gets created, gets approved, needs to be managed by, you know, clerk's office, assessor's office, CPED, and then gets monitored every year. So, if it was, you know, our land area, all of those, that might be a lot. You know, when you have the new or rehabilitated NEZ districts, like we're seeing tonight, you know, a, for, this is like the nuance, right? So for every one, if, let me make sure I'm saying this correctly, with rehabilitated units, it's every eight units gets one, is one certificate, right? So if you have a project with a lot of increments of rehabilitated units, more certificates, right? More certificates to manage and monitor. New projects, it's all one certificate that you apply for. So, it just depends on, you know, what, what is coming forward, and that's why we're, that's why we're creating the policy, right? To put forth to say, when one comes to us, we need to pause and say, where are we within our cap? How many other NEZs do we have? You know, how many are gonna be sunsetting in the next X number? Do we expect to sunset in the, you know, in the X, next X number of years? And what does that look like? So it's, I'm not sure we can say, yes, we totally have capacity right now because there are, there's all sorts of different factors that go into it. And again, that's why we set out, what are the criteria that we need to be thinking about when a request is made for an NEZ, whether it's a developer requesting it or whether it's the city saying, I think we really need to put an NEZ boundary in this location, given other, you know, these criteria, we'll have to go through and say, oh, do we have the capacity to do that? Let's think about what that would mean. And so that's how we would judge it.
Okay. Is the only NEZ you see coming forward in the next year, this one that we're gonna be addressing tonight?
No, I would expect there to be more. And I think that's one of the reasons why we wanna make sure that we have a policy in place that outlines all the steps for creating it, how we manage it, what staff is in charge of what position, and what are the terms for projects to be thinking through.
Thank you. And how is this, how is it getting, how, how do you or we as a city get the word out to developers to say that this is a possibility in Kalamazoo?
Sure. So, two ways. So one, it's one of the reasons why with homestead NEZs, we now want that organizational support, right? Because we need that body to kind of be the mouthpiece, that support group, the shot from the rooftops, hey, property owners, this is an opportunity for you to have, to put minimum investment to property and to have a tax benefit that goes with it. So for homestead, adding that requirement for the support organization, I think, plays that role. In terms of new and rehabilitated, kind of, those two types of NEZs, one of the things that we will be doing, and it's something we've been talking about for a while and have picked back up, is our development process and, you know, making sure that our development process is in the right space, understanding, you know, having staff understand where all the incentives can, you know, kind of come up into that development process and how we talk about them with developers. So that next year, we can run a series of development workshops, developer workshops and trainings to say, hey, you wanna learn about some of the incentives that the city can, you know, the city supports, whether they're ours, state, federal, you know, we can talk about those. Hey, you wanna talk about site plan and be, you know, an expert in site plan process? Come to this workshop, we're gonna walk you through the whole thing. And we really wanna set these up, so we're kind of, we are controlling the narrative, we're talking about our development process, educating those, either emerging or seasoned developers about the process, and we'll run those every year. And I think that is another way that we can be able to share that information and will also, again, help make that development process run smoother, more predictably for both staff as well as for the developer.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Commissioner Prado?
Thank you so much for the presentation tonight. I guess I just wanted to first share, I'm just so stinking proud of the work that you all are doing in housing. We, a couple of us were a part of a, a presentation on housing zoning and the Michigan Association of Planners had a presenter there talking about the work and, and she kept talking about how the city of Kalamazoo, she keeps pointing to in terms of like progress that they're trying to take, momentum they're trying to take in the housing. You know, if there was like a theme for tonight, you see a million dollars of gap financing, $350,000 for brownfield grants to all support housing. I mean, the theme tonight is that, hey, the city told us they have a priority and one of the key priorities is housing and we're walking the walk. So thank you. It's really cool to see. I also wanted to just ask Sherilyn, for you to share a, ask you a question to share a little bit about the work you're doing, but, little off topic, but still, Jermaine, you are a member of the MISHDA Region J, I guess, think tank group on housing stock, which is a huge honor. I think you've done a great job of advocating for the things that matter to us as a city of Kalamazoo. I was wondering if you could just share a little bit about your involvement in that and like what, what that group is trying to do right now and why it's important that you have a seat at the table?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the compliment as well. So, MISHDA put out, created a housing plan. They did a bunch of outreach and did surveys and came up with priorities, multiple priorities. Then what they've asked is they've asked each individual region to, to begin to rate those priorities as it, as it pertains to their southwest region. And so, we have many stakeholders from many different municipalities on this, within this think tank that, that Commissioner Prado just said. And we are going through those housing goals and priorities. And so, one of the ones that our area has landed on is that it is a priority to increase the housing supply. You know, a pretty, like you would think, a pretty basic priority, but clearly, the state is asking us to define this. Like, it really, is this a priority above something else? And so, one of the things that this group is really doing is we're, we're sitting down, we're having conversations, most of the time pleasant, sometimes a little bit, you know, contentious with going back and forth on what that need really is. And beginning to put some, some KPIs around, around these goals that we are identifying as key strategies and priorities, both in the area of advocacy and in the area of funding and in the area of policy, so that the state is beginning to look at the different areas and say, all right, here, we need to now begin to help and aid and come alongside to get these things done. Once again, whether it's through advocacy, policy, or funding. And so, we've, we've had, yeah, most, mostly good conversations in that group, and we have an August 31st deadline to, it was a really fast turnaround, to present our findings to, or our findings, the group's consensus, to our strategies, our KPIs, and our intended outcomes.
And I would say that you're one of the more active participating voices in that, in that work, so thank you for being there. I think the last time we met to talk about this work was, I think, at our July 17th meeting, if I remember correctly, I might have my dates mixed up, but I know we kind of pumped the brakes because we were hearing from developers in this housing space, just some, you know, concerns, they wanted to make sure they felt comfortable with some of these changes, and I appreciate that you gave that opportunity. I just was curious about any takeaways from that or, or added comforts that people have now since that date?
Yeah, so Christina might wanna speak more to this, but I will just give my, my impression on this. So, it was really good to reach out to some of the seasoned developers in this arena and really get some of their, not just insight, but the practical working knowledge to kind of their performas and what they're dealing with as far as, as far as the construction costs, the operating costs, and the revenue. And to think about those as sort of three, three unique buckets and how, how this incentive is really assisting with one bucket, but it's not necessarily assisting with the other buckets. And so, to all of a sudden say, we're gonna help you with this bucket, but then we're gonna potentially zen ya with this bucket, to get, to get that feedback of what that was really doing when we looked at the overall development cost and to really think about it as, as how it fits within their performas. So I felt that there was really good, I thought it was a very mindful conversation, yeah.
Definitely garnered the takeaway that the greatest concern is just maximizing the number of years, you know, you know, in that 12 to 15 year range and not cutting ourselves short in terms of that competitiveness with, you know. The other thing I was gonna ask you as well is, so looking at, so they've got the urban core, urban center, general urban, if you're like looking at the onion components to it as well, and you talked a little bit about the parking specs in terms of, of that work. I just wondered if, if, if there's any leeway to considerations, like say if somebody wants to develop in one of those second and third tier layers of the onion and they don't feel like there's adequate public transportation or non-motorized infrastructure to support that? You know, how, how do we look at that and take that into consideration? Or does the city say at that point to say, okay, we need to prioritize in this area because somebody's expressed interest in building 100-unit, you know, development, you know, and we don't feel like there's adequate sidewalks or adequate, you know, bus stops or those sort of things? I was just curious if you could give a little thought to that as well?
Yeah, so we did discuss that, and that's why we, that's why we really have three options. You can do this and this, or you could do this and this. And so, we really felt like in areas where the parking would be problematic, that, all right, well, type. The default then can be type. So, it's the affordability and type, which would, which is why I'm so proud of the zoning as well because our new... is why I'm so proud of the zoning as well, because our new zoning allows for, for different types to happen. So it allows for some of that density, creating the opportunity for both supply and affordability, all in one development.
Cool. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Prudell. Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to take a step back and talk about the organizations that we're going to use to get this information out. I want to, is it just neighborhood organizations? What kind of organizations are we talking about when you say they have to come together and possibly, you know, create their own zone? Does it have to be the neighborhood association? Can it be, can you talk about that for us? So as individuals are watching, they also know that they don't have to rely on a neighborhood association if that area does not have a neighborhood association?
Sure. So we specifically, we were very mindful of that, because we know that not all of our neighborhoods have organizations, or organizations with the capacity that might be able to support a series of blocks in this endeavor. And so when we talk about supporting organizations, we very specifically say, it could be a neighborhood association, or it could be just a community-based or housing-based organization that is able to support this area. Now, our experience with NEZs have been whole neighborhoods, right? Because we have Vine, and that's our only homestead, and it's the whole neighborhood. I don't know that we would do more whole neighborhood NEZs in the future. It is a really big area, and a more, a more tactical or kind of focused effort might be more successful. Might, we might be able to better put that support organization, better communicate it out, have more people participate in it, and really be able to focus in areas where there's that imbalance of homeowner and rental properties, because this is a, an incentive for those that are owners, right? So it's, it can be a tool to help increase numbers in that category. So no, does not need to be just a neighborhood organization. There are other options. We lay out in the policy some of the specific tasks or responsibilities for that organization during the creation process, and during when individual homeowners are seeking their individual tax certificates or awards. And that's, you know, again, that's the policy. We spend a lot of time thinking about the terms, and the number of years, and those kind of things. But the benefit of a policy is also laying out those roles and responsibilities, and clear tasks for everybody involved, so everything runs smoothly. And this is a good example of that.
Just a question, because I don't know this. So you talk about the boundaries of creating a zone. If it was a new homestead, that zone could be that one parcel? Or no? I just want to-
No. No, there's minimum a number of lots that are required, or facilities that are required when you're setting the boundary. That's laid out by the state statute.
Was that 10 or 8? Was it 10?
It's 10.
Okay. Sorry about that.
And, you know, there's some nuance there as it relates to the act, you know, when, it can be different than 10, but 10 is kind of the most common requirement number. And so there's probably a sweet spot, right? It, it's hard to say, and I couldn't say now, oh, you know, this three blocks is, you know, both sides of three blocks is perfect, or, you know, this size is perfect, because it really does depend on the uniqueness of that area. And that's one of the reasons why, excuse me, in the process to establish an NEZ, we have a pre-application meeting. So we can sit down, if we're talking about homestead, we can sit down with that supporting organization and kind of talk through, okay, let's look at the numbers. What is the area that you're talking about? Let's look at some data. You know, it's, how many, you know, how many planted lots are in this area? Do we need to, do you meet at least the minimum state statute threshold? Is there something else that we should be looking at that might have a better benefit for doing it? Because again, staff has, there's staff time involved for the monitoring and the creation of each individual certificate. So we're also trying to make sure that we're balancing it from both the internal perspective as well as the external perspective.
Thank you. And I will say, I was very excited to hear, again, about bringing back the, I believe it is, new developer training, I think that, or developer boot camp, it's a new developer training, because I think that was something that we talked about in December, almost a year ago, December of 2022, Cal. So yay. Glad that that's coming back. And I will say, I am excited to hear Mr. Kilpatrick speak. Him and Brooke Osterman have been doing great things with Housing Next in the city of Grand Rapids. And, you know, they've got some great knowledge that we can also glean from also.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Other questions at this point? Commissioner Prudell?
This might be a bit of a stretch, but it just made me think of something about homestead NEZs. But we talked about like stacking opportunities, and maybe this isn't warranted or allowed, but let's just say hypothetically, like Building Blocks Kalamazoo, right, has an opportunity to support a homeowner with over $500 worth of project, right? We know that homeowner already might struggle with maintaining things. It's challenging to keep it up. We want to keep it up for the neighborhood. Would there be opportunities to take advantage of that NEZ if, if somebody like Building Blocks, say hypothetically, was helping that homeowner over a $500 amount?
Sounds like a really lovely synergy between a neighborhood-focused organization and some property owners. So I think that, you know, homestead doesn't have the opportunity to pile on other physical incentives necessarily, but that type of community-based, yeah, leverage, thank you, you know, that pairs really, that pairs really well. And, you know, perhaps Building Blocks should be an appropriate type of organization for that supporting, supporting organization, if they were so inclined.
I think especially in like a neighborhood like Vine, people particularly find it expensive to maintain things to historic specifications. And I know we've got some great work coming up here to ease up some of those restrictions, where like wood type and that sort of thing are diversified for homeowners. But it's just a thought, you know, especially for that neighborhood. Thanks.
Other questions, Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to get some information out there, and just to get answers for our community. I just thought about this as Commissioner Prudell talked about the Building Blocks. So, and again, this all goes back to the homestead, or the homestead. So say an individual applies for an NEZ certificate, and they get it. Can they also couple that with CBDG funds to help with what they would do? Or is that something, is that another creative solution that we can look at putting into place? I guess I, I don't know.
So just for clarification, the NEZ would have to be established by the supporting organization. The individual household would then apply for the certificate within that established NEZ. The, the certificate or the investment would either, would have to be proven by the homeowner, how it came in. The, the CDBG, the CDBG dollars are a separate pot, could potentially be used, like currently, there's a down payment with that. So they, those dollars could have been used to assist with getting into the house. Two separate buckets. But yeah, there could, there could be some play between them.
Okay. And thank you for that, because that, you know, when I talk about, you know, looking at some of our policies and how to remove some of those barriers, that could be something, you know, that we could look at. So I'm just asking for general knowledge.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Juarez?
So if there is an established zone, and there's a project already happening in that zone that's almost done, could they apply for the certificate?
So not if it's a new or rehabbed project, because you cannot apply for certificates if the work has already been started in those zones. So if, for example, if we were to create a district, let's just keep it in downtown, and a project had already started work, started construction, and then I was like, oh, I, you know, I, you know, I need to go back and do my certificate. The statute says you actually can't do that, right? You need to, it's before work starts that you're making that application.
All set, Commissioner Juarez? Going once, going twice. You all set? See you thinking. All right. All right. Well, thank you for all the great questions, and thank you Sherilyn Parsons, and Planner Anderson, and Jamie McCarthy for doing all this work. I do have a couple of questions. And I think a couple, some things are really, really important. You know, having a policy is obviously very important for the commission for understanding, and for the development community, anyone who's doing development, or, or working on their own house in a neighborhood. So I really appreciate that. Are you comfortable that now that we're at this point with this policy and proposing this, that we've had enough consultation with development side, maybe looking at things that are working in sister communities? So this is going to be something we're not going to be needing to amend, you know, in short order? That this is going to be a workable policy that we can live with for a while?
Yes. We have spent quite a bit of time over the last few months studying and looking at what other cities have done, and what's put forth. We've had many conversations. Our working group that we had to create this policy included staff from the Assessor's Office, the City Manager's Office, as well as both planning and community investment within CPED. And, you know, we laid out, you know, the priorities that follow the strategic vision, the master plan, the housing strategy, the data we now have from the county, which helped guide our work. And, you know, we would have conversation after conversation, and things clearly started to coalesce at, at some point, right? And, you know, new things weren't being added to the idea table. And that made us all feel comfortable with where we are, and what we're moving forward, and how it's tied to, again, all the work. We're talking about one tool, right? Constantly thinking about how it relates to the other tools that could be used, and constantly thinking about how that tool relates to the overall housing strategy, imagine Kalamazoo vision, and, you know, that end of the, of the spectrum.
Right. So it does not seem to you that once, you know, this is rolled out, that we will be looking at potential amendments to this then, on a project-by-project basis?
Sure. So it's a great question. Anytime staff brings something forward, whether it's policy, whether it's the zoning code amendments, you know, we always bring forward what we believe is our best, our, our best work. And that's where we are right now. You never know until you get through and test it over and over again, if everything is perfect, because that's how you know it works, is testing it. And policy zoning codes, it's really hard to test. So you put out what you think is best, and that's what we feel that we have done. And that is what is before you tonight.
Thank you. Hey, a couple of quick little board detail, Sherilyn, were you going to say something?
Well, I was. I was just going to say, you know, in, in answering that question too, we did get some feedback on our first revision. And so we ended up putting an additional piece that we really felt with the parking, that we felt was a win-win. So it, it reduces costs of the overall project. It also could potentially extend your years for, for the certificate. And then it also maximized land, which we care about maximizing the land. So that was a piece that we, we really responded to when it was, when the feedback was something that we thought, think we're going to be going back to commission and, and offering this up. So, so that was a piece that we did put in there as what we felt was a win-win on this.
All right. I appreciate that. Hey, quick question. Remind me why we are rewarding housing types as one of the measures?
Could you repeat your question? I'm sorry. Remind me what?
Why is it that housing type-
Sure.
-is one of the measures for which a reward, you know, could be granted for an NEZ project?
Sure. So the data that we have from the county, and what we've known all along, and you hear about it not only in Kalamazoo, across Michigan and the country, is that we are, as a country, overbuilt for one type of housing. And that is a single-family detached unit. As our population ages, not everybody can stay or want that type of unit. As you get older, and if you think about the other end of the spectrum, as someone who is entering the job market, you know, maybe has a partner, maybe doesn't, maybe have kids, that type of housing doesn't meet everybody's needs. It can't be afforded by everybody, and so forth. So we know that we are missing other housing types. It's often referred to as missing middle housing, I think is the term that, you know, we've used before. The data that we have from the Upjohn Institute related to the county housing strategy talks about very specifically the housing types that are projected to be needed in Kalamazoo County, specific, and specifically in the city. And so thinking about how we get more of these types that we know we need in the community across all income ranges, we know we need these types. And so adding that type into the equation became, as, you know, became one of the priorities for that reason. It's missing, we don't see it as one of the reasons. We talked about some of the other tools, the pre-approved plans that we have been working on, those come, those cover some of these housing types too, because it's not what we're seeing being built. And we need to find a way to get those built, and to kind of streamline that process as much as possible to make it easier.
Okay. Super. For the neighborhood, the homestead style, in which you already spoke about, unlikely that we will designate a whole nother neighborhood, probably, when we're thinking about it. But for neighborhood that we've already done this in for some time, how do we determine when it has served its purpose, and we have now hit that success point?
Sure. And some of that is the annual monitoring that we will be doing to understand how many new certificates, how many have been phased, like have run the course of their life, how many were revoked or ended early for various reasons. And so through that monitoring, we have that. I think other signals would be, is no one new applying, right? Are the numbers beginning to drop off? What does that look like? And I think that those are some of our cues for saying, this district might have reached the end of its limit.
All right. Thank you so much. So, once again, thank you. Good to see you. And I'm sure we'll see each other again here in a few moments, right? COO Lamb, anything else?
Nothing further for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now is the opportunity for Commissioner comments for the committee of the whole. Just a reminder, for anybody who's watching, there's also an opportunity for Commissioner comments at our business meeting, which is generally the opportunity that people take advantage of here in the commission. So any Commissioner comments for this meeting? All right, seen none. We are adjourned. Business meeting is at 7:00.